...meeting for April 17th, 2019. The Board has been in executive session since 6 o'clock to discuss a personnel matter and a contractual matter. Mr. Cooper is not able to attend the meeting tonight, and that's why I have the gavel. We can stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we can have introductions.
Dave Hurst.
Jonathan Fishmine.
Meredith Moriarty.
Will O'Beare.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Chris Meyer.
Christine Beck.
Judy Shob.
Do we have any PIG students out there? You guys need to stay until the end of the meeting or 9:00, whichever comes first. If we get to 9:00 and the meeting is not over, we'll take a break. When we're done, you guys should come up and sign out. There are sheets up here, and if you need a signature for class, you can have any board member sign your paper. First up are the minutes of the April 3rd, 2019, regular Board meeting. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the April 3rd, 2019, regular Board meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone here from the student senate? Nope?
I'm ready.
Getting ready to go on vacation. And then next up is the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I've got a few announcements. I'd like to congratulate the cast and crew of the high school musical Titanic. I think most Board members saw it. I thought the show was tremendous. I'd like to recognize Amy Roos, the new director, for a wonderful first performance. Also, a big thank you to the parents who helped with the production. I know they put in many hours to make the show a success. And as of today, the auditorium is out of commission for construction, so. I'd like to congratulate Brianna Price, who received the Chamber of Commerce Youth Leadership Award at the annual dinner last week. Also, on Tuesday morning, this past Tuesday morning, several staff and students were recognized at the YMCA Leadership Award Ceremony. Some of our staff were recognized. Mr. Domell, the principal, Jason Dashu, Eileen Turo, and Mary Scro. Congratulations to them. And some of our students who were recognized at the breakfast were Molly Drew, Hannah Duncan, Peter Gallagher, Michael Gallet, Abigail Hebfer, Mara Cosford, Alexi Hull, Jacob Kontronowitz, Kathy Kirby, Austin Bai, and Andre Sevilla. So I'd like to congratulate all of them. It was a really nice breakfast. The YMCA does it every year to recognize leadership, so that's my report.
Next up is the Board of Education report. I would just echo the congratulations for all of the cast, crew, orchestra, directors, parents, everything that went into the Titanic. I thought it was a great production. And I also had a chance to stop into the concert at the high school this week. I think it was the auditorium's last hurrah, but it was a great concert.
I got to see Titanic as well, saw the Sunday performance. And the one thing I just wanted to say was that, you know, sometimes in a musical, you're like, oh, you know, the star was great, and the first couple of leads were fantastic, and they really carried the show. Like, the actors and actresses kept coming out, and they kept, like, performing amazingly, like, oh, my God, she's really good, oh, my God, he's amazing. Like, just character after character was phenomenal, and just their singing ability and their performance was absolutely tremendous.
I also went to the Monday night last concert, which was really nice. I enjoyed it, and it's kind of weird that they're going to be ripping down the auditorium after so many years. I'm excited to see the new auditorium when it's finally done. Also, we had a scrimmage against, the boys tennis had a scrimmage against Fayetteville Manlius a couple weeks ago, and it was a really nice collaboration between the two schools, one Section 2, one Section 3. But JV Varsity played with Fayetteville Manlius, and the girls actually came out to support. So it was a really, it was a really nice day. It was an all-day event, and we were very successful that day. So it was, overall, a good day. So the other thing, I also saw Titanic, and I thought it was a wonderful production. The kids had a really great time, and they all said they had a really good experience this year. So I wanted to congratulate Ms. Roos as well for her first year out. And I know last week, we, I'm going to bring it up now because it's not on the agenda, but for some of the policies that we're going to talk about at another time. I had talked about conflict of interest and ethics, and I touched on it a little bit. And I just wanted to give a little background on myself and where I'm coming from when I talk about it, and why it's important to me. So I don't know if many of the Board members here know, I was raised by a single dad. I was three years old when my parents divorced, and my dad raised my sister and myself on $25,000 a year. So I did not get voice lessons. I did not get tennis lessons, and I did not have a lot of the amenities that some of our students here have, but some don't. And I also lived in an area where it wasn't necessarily, like, considered the projects, but I know I was embarrassed to tell people where I grew up. So I remember specifically some examples of when somebody asked me where I lived, and I made up the neighborhood, and, you know, it's kind of embarrassing now to think that that's how I felt, but it was. And so it's important to me, when I'm talking to the Board or the administration, and I've tried to get my point across for quite some time now, on how we're going to add language to a policy or create a policy on how we appoint people to positions that get direct personal financial gain. It's in direct conflict with the roles in which we appoint them to. So as we look at the policies at the next Board meeting or before, I'm going to keep honing in on this topic, on how are we, as a Board, going to address this situation? And we're the ones creating it. There's many policies out there that do address it, and I'm very passionate about the topic because there are students here, either they don't have the means, or their parents won't give them the means if they have the means, or they don't find it a priority, to make sure that we're doing what we need to do as a district to make sure their interests are protected and everybody has a fair opportunity. And I'm just going to, I'm just going to keep bringing it up until we have a conversation on it. I don't care how we have it, but we need to have it, and it's been a long time coming. And now's our opportunity. We're working on the policies, and I hope that the Policy Committee really takes a look at this and figures out a way on how we're going to address it going forward, because I feel very strongly about it, and it's obvious, and that's it. So, thank you. Thanks.
I would have to second that, because I think that, in the end, the question ends up being that we have to ask ourselves, are, at what point do we recognize that our appointment of individuals, when that appointment creates a conflict, is something that we're doing to ourselves? We're creating the conflict by the, some of the appointments we make. And I think that's the conversation, part of the conversation that needs to be had. So I hope that the Policy Committee, when it meets, will look into that. And late this evening, I did send you the, I did send the Policy Committee and the Board the language for the definition of perceived conflict of interest, which I hope you will incorporate into the conflict of interest policy or the ethics wherever you're going to put it.
Thank you. I look forward to having that discussion amongst the whole Board, as it is an important topic. I had two issues I wanted to bring up. First, there was an announcement this week that Bethlehem will no longer be offering straws, plastic straws, to all the students unless they request one for a specific reason. I just wanted to thank the district for making that choice and helping protect our environment and our oceans. I know there were several people involved in that decision. A parent, Erin Ledoux, I know was instrumental in bringing the topic up. We, as a Board, brought the topic up last year. Mark Warford and the whole Green team, I know were heavily involved in this, and our food service director, Elisa Isner. So I just wanted to thank all those people for coming together and making that decision. Also, I had another question regarding the Raptor ID system that is now being implemented in all of the, in all the schools. We got an email about it. And I did have a question. When this was first brought up with the pilot program, I believe Jonathan brought up the question of whether or not we had any sort of protocol for people who don't have IDs, perhaps someone who does not have legal status. And the email didn't mention anything about what to do if you did not have an ID, so I was wondering if we do have a procedure involved.
So the, we do have different versions of the communication of families, specifically with our ENL families, who are likely to perhaps be in that situation. So they were communicated through the ENL teachers.
Okay.
Some of those letters obviously require translation, too, so that was part of it. We have a kind of soft rollout, so right now, if people come in and they don't have an ID, we're allowing them in, kind of through the end of the year, and ask them to please bring an ID in. But we have the ability to manually enter someone if we need to, if they don't have ID. And obviously, particularly in the elementary schools, most of the staff and principals know those families and if there's a concern. So we haven't, so far, we haven't had a real concern about that.
Great.
But we do have the ability to still allow people in without that.
I'm glad we have the ability. I just wanted to make sure that that was being communicated
Yes.
to the people
Yeah.
who need to hear it. Thank you.
Anybody else? And next up, we have our presentation on CTE Pathways to Graduation. Tracy.
Thank you. I'm Tracy Farrell, new business education teacher here. I'm going to have the mic.
Yeah. It's being recorded. Okay. Tracy Farrell, new business education teacher here at the high school. Thank you for having me. I want to thank Mr. Domell, the principal, Nick Petrituni, who is my supervisor, the superintendent, Mr. Hurst, Ms. Kehoe, and the Board for taking this opportunity and allowing us to move forward, hopefully, with this. The State Education Department has provided opportunities for school districts to move forward with CTE program approval for an additional credential on the diploma, and so that's what I'm here to help you understand. We're applying for four programs of study with the State Education Department in the Business Education CTE Department. So just over the next few minutes, I'll very quickly talk about the program approval process, provide an overview of our four business programs of study. A few weeks ago, the Board had received a packet with information that was residual from our external review panel, and I'll explain to what that meeting was about and the documentation that you should have received. We'll talk about clarifying information, any questions that you might have, and hopefully talk about the process in getting the applications for signature so we can present to the New York State Education Department and start for September of 2019. So one of the strongest questions I would like you to think about as I'm going through my presentation is, do you feel that you are ready to endorse our business education program of study, designed to prepare Bethlehem High School students to be successful, whether they go directly into the workforce or continue on to post-secondary education? And the focus that we should try to change our mindset to is what students are graduating to, rather than what I've always known it to be, of what they are graduating from. So let me share with you a little bit about the process that we've gone through. Thank you to the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and the administrators here at the high school. Before I came in, in September, they had already started the process and went through talking about what would be necessary to get an approved program and in order to provide another option for students when they graduate. So in a CTE-approved program, whether it's in business, and we already do have one FACS-approved program for family consumer science, it provides meaningful learning standards of CTE courses, connections to academic content, work-based learning opportunities, because work-based learning is an actual piece of the sequence for the approved program, post-secondary agreements with local colleges and universities, and provides a lot of college credit courses for the students to participate in, three-part technical assessment as the capstone for the endorsement for the diploma, and provided by CTE-certified teachers, such as myself. So students who go through an approved program are seen to be college and career-ready. They receive a technical endorsement or a business credential on their diploma upon leaving high school. They have real-life connections with career in the workplace. They receive instruction from a high-quality CTE program and are eligible to participate in a CTE 4+1 graduation pathway as another option for graduation. And they do have a competitive advantage with all of the pieces of the program that we have in place. And a benefit for districts, many of us are familiar with the Every Student Succeeds Act for college, career, and civic readiness, and the measures of weighting of two for each district based on what they have in place to provide to students. So in addition to having a Regents' Diploma with advanced designation and a Regents' Diploma with seal of biliteracy, and a Regents' Diploma and score of three or higher on an AP exam, you can also now receive points for a Regents' Diploma with a CTE endorsement. I'll also show you briefly a sample schedule of a student who would be scheduled for an Advanced Regents' Diploma, who is also possibly receiving a CTE endorsement. So there are a lot of options for students moving forward with this. So as part of the steps for the New York State approval, again, I'd like to thank the administration for having started the process before I came to the district in September. But we needed to start a self-study, which was, had begun last year. Throughout the year, when I came into the district, I was asked to look at what was in place and what pieces could be put together to see what kind of applications we could apply for, and I realized that we had everything in place to apply for all four. We had all four pieces of programming and classes that would fit in each of the sequences, which I'll show you an example of, and all we needed to do was put it all together and put together the documentation that State Ed required, and we were able to follow through with that self-study. We had a number of different meetings, one of which was the external review meeting. Board President participated in that as well. We had members from the business community join us here at the high school with some parents, some students, and some of our administrators to look at the plans as they were put together, to see if they had any questions and see if it made sense, look at sample schedules of what students could complete as far as part of the review of the application process. We had completed that back in March. And then when we took all of their feedback and adjusted the applications, we are now here presenting it to you, the Board of Education, to hopefully approve it so we can move forward and approve it, apply with the state. So why programs of study in business? The 2018 Regional Economic Labor Outlook in the Capital Region gives us statistics that when there is a projected growth of more than 7% in any particular industry, it is seen as being very progressive and hiring. And we have the statistics that indicate that for business and financial operations, for example, it would be an increase of 12.3% between now and 2024, 11.7 in management and 11.3 in marketing. So with those kinds of statistics, we, we can't ignore the fact that many of our students should be prepared to enter the workforce into those industries and those specific occupations to support our businesses in the local area. So the programs of study here, we're looking at applying for with the State Education Department, include one in accounting and finance, one in business management and administration, one in entrepreneurship, and one in marketing. There has to be a minimum of three units of study, three full-year units of study. You can see that our units exceed that. So for example, in accounting and finance, the students would receive 3.5 units of study. In addition to that, we also have a requirement that the students should receive at least one of those courses with college credit credential in there. And as you can see, for accounting and finance, the students could have the opportunity to receive 12 college credits, which is a minimum of four courses. So a number of the courses that we offer here, out of the 11 courses we do offer, only three do not have college credit tied to them. So I think that's a wonderful opportunity that you've allowed for your students here at Bethlehem High School, and I'm very pleased and honored to be able to provide as well. We have articulation agreements with Hudson Valley Community College, as well as Fonda Montgomery Community College. Business Administration and Management, we have 3.5 units with 15 college credits. Entrepreneurship is 3.5 to 4 credits, depending on what courses the students choose to take for their sequence, and 15 to 18 college credits, and you can see Marketing has 15 college credits. One thing that Reece Pasilico from the New York State CTE Tax Center wanted me to emphasize and remind me to tell you is that Bethlehem has the most college credits for every program identified in their programs of study than any other school district in the area, so she's pretty proud to be a part of our work here, too. You have received copies of a sample program of study. I provided it to Brittany earlier today, and you may have had a copy of it earlier when we were doing the review meeting back in March. This gives you an idea of the courses specific to the program of study. So the one up on the screen is the Business Management Administration. It tells you that Career and Financial Management is a required course for every program of study, so you'll see that in each of them, and that this particular program of study has the 3.0 units in the college, in the courses on the left, and the .5 for the required Career and Financial Management course. And also identifying that the workplace experience as part of that 3.0 program units is equivalent to any work-based learning that the students might be able to participate in, usually between their junior or senior year, as a capstone. This next slide gives you a sample, and you did receive a copy of this as well in your packet, a sample schedule of a student who is on track for receiving an Advanced Regents' Diploma. And what we did is we outlined in blue the possibilities of where the student might be able to fit in a business sequence, for example, in Business Management Administration, in addition to completing the Advanced Regents' Diploma. I would like to point out that they also have room in each year, 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th, for an elective, which would probably be lunch, just so you know. A lot of people think that they have to do all this, and then they don't get to have lunch. It's not the case. Here is another example. This tells you what our projected enrollment is for each of the programs that we're anticipating. We have enrollment anticipated for accounting and finance of 132, general ed, and 32 in special ed services. Business Management, you can see 184, with a projected of 21 of those students in special ed. Entrepreneurship, 132, and Marketing, 164. So we do hope that students may also have the opportunity to, again, not only receive an advanced diploma, a regular Regents' Diploma, a CTE program of study, but it also could serve as students who are in special education programs as well. Love this picture. This was our visit down to the Supreme Court in Albany. As part of the work-based learning, there are many opportunities the State Education Department has opened up for students to complete for those work-based learning opportunities. They could be formal internships. They could be business franchises in the building, such as the Byatt. We have the school store in the high school. We have field trips, job shadowing, and additional community service that can be added into their work-based learning experiences, as long as it's all documented properly, which is part of the process when someone's identified to be on a CTE program path approval. As part of the pathway, the students at the end would be completing a three-part technical endorsement. It would be a written part. There is a performance part, and then there is a locally-developed project or portfolio that's put together and housed in the school that provides all of the pieces that the students need in place to be granted the pathway and the credential on their diploma. And for a CTE-approved program, it is a graduation pathway. Just so you know, this picture was from our district meeting for FBLA, and the students came away with some awards, so I was very proud of them that day. And you know that the CTE graduation pathway, I'll emphasize the CTE-approved program that includes a technical endorsement, is part of the options for a graduation pathway school districts can now provide. So do you feel that we are ready, you are ready to endorse a business education program of study, again, designed to prepare Bethlehem High School students to be successful, whether they go directly into the workforce or continue into the post-secondary education? And does anybody have any questions? I know that was very quick. Some of you had received the information prior, so, yes, sir?
So can you go to the slide for the enrollment? I've got some questions about that.
Yes, let me go back. Here.
So is that the current enrollment, or is that the, I mean, is that the, people enrolled for next year, or?
These numbers were a projection based on what we currently have in place for our classes as to what is also expected to be projected for next year.
Okay, and it's 9 through 12?
Yes, 9 through 12. Mostly 10, 11, and 12.
Is there a hope that there's a starting point, or do we want to expand on those numbers, or like, do you have a vision of, like, that's what I was trying to figure out, like, is this like, boy, this is a great number to start with?
This is a number to start with, in my opinion. Yes.
Okay. This is a weird question, but like, first of all, I wish I had taken some of these classes when I was in high school. I really do. Like, I, we, we have friends that took these classes, and one of them's in Florida, who's got a house on the ocean with a boat. So, yeah, jealous. Is there any, like, stigma with any of these classes, that it's not the traditional rule? Because I think that was some of the experience with 25 years ago, and I don't know if any of that still exists. Is it gone? I plead ignorance on this.
Well, when you ask that, what comes to mind for me is, I love what I teach in business education, because I have a plethora of skills and abilities that come into my classroom. I have a marketing class right now made up of students with AP track, Advanced Regents' Track, Special Education. I have students in baseball, other sports, not sports, working full-time, you know, they tell me they're working full-time, and I tell them, you're not supposed to work full-time, you're in school. I have a wide range of skills and abilities that come together. I think they're learning about each other, and I think it levels the playing field and helps them understand that business education is for everybody. Everybody is eventually going to work for a business, and I think they do respect the different students that come into the classroom of any skill and ability, and I think they've learned from each other, and they continue to do so. I have a couple students here, wouldn't you agree? I'm getting a couple thumbs up here. Thank you, Will.
I just asked because, like, you know, I wish someone had pushed me more into some of these things. I think there, you know, when I was here a bajillion years ago, it was, you know, okay, get your liberal arts, get your English and your social studies, and get to your college, and, you know, move on that path, and
Right.
some of this wasn't
Well, if I could
I wish, I wish
If you don't mind me adding a little bit
I wish it was more, when I, that's all I'm trying to say.
I was a former business education teacher in another district about seven, eight years ago, and programs were starting to get literally decimated because of other priorities that State Education Department and districts had at the time. I was in a department with five people and went down to 1.8. I was the .8. So I needed to move on, because they couldn't guarantee that I would be a teaching at all. CEIP also, Career Exploration Internship Program, which is one of our strongest internship opportunities, is the best-kept secret in New York State, let alone in any of the districts. I currently am only serving 12 students a semester. We would love, we've talked about possibly serving 100 a year. That's great, but we need the resources to do that. It's possible. It just takes a lot of manpower to do that, because we need to follow up with the businesses and make sure the students are placed properly and, you know, re-coordinated if need to be. So they are wonderful programs. I, as a high school student, a long time ago, was able to participate in co-op, which was a work experience program. I got credit for working part-time for two full years. Not a lot of students knew that. I got it released at 11:30 back then and was able to go right to work, and I think it helped me become the better person than I am today, and I just want to bring those kind of experiences to the students. Business education is one of those things that has never been mandated, but because we have the ability to provide a lot of the extras, the college credits, the articulation agreements with the colleges, the internship program to give the students the extra experience, I think some of my students would also tell you that they enjoyed the field trips we've gone on and will be going on for our Sports Business Day at MetLife Stadium. Those things don't come up very often. We got to meet Assemblyman Fahey last week when we went down for a job shadowing David Junior Achievement down at the New York State Assembly and the Empire State Plaza. So we have wonderful experiences that I think are just different and that business education can bring, so I appreciate that. I'm glad I had the experience of having business education when I was in high school, but I like the idea that State Education Department and the school districts are seeing
can bring, so I appreciate that. I'm glad I had the experience of having business education when I was in high school, but I like the idea that state education department and the school districts are seeing the importance of it again to bring that, those experiences for our students now. So hopefully we can build the program bigger.
Thank you.
I think it's a great idea. I was a business major, human resource management major, so I think it's excellent that we would consider bringing this program to the district, and it also diversifies our offerings. I think, I have a daughter who's a freshman in college, and it is our mindset, it seems like STEM, 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 sorry, Dave. And I think we get so focused on that, that we don't get to know the students to some degree and say, "Hey, maybe you need to, you would like business, it would help build communication skills," or "it would help build self-esteem," or "there are people who want to be business majors and go to business schools." And my daughter finally embraced, she's not a STEM major, she's an English education major, so I think it's, I think it's good that we would have this type of program, and it can apply to a large variety of our students here, and I think that's, that's the main goal. But back to Chris's question on the numbers that you had up for students, what is our, do we know our current numbers? Like, where are we in the program in enrollment?
I have a roster currently this year of about 125 students each semester.
Okay.
Per class, or?
And many of them take multiple courses.
Okay.
Many of those classes are semester courses.
Yes, most of them are, yeah.
Yeah. My oldest took the marketing class many moons ago and got college credit for it, I think, through Hudson Valley. And what people don't know is those, for SUNY schools, they'll transfer to all the SUNY schools for four-year.
Credit.
Yes.
How much of an increase is that projected? So if you have like 125, you're looking at, like, what type of growth?
I would love to triple it in three years.
Okay. And I thought that, I like the graduating to instead of graduating from. I thought that was a good slogan. Maybe use it in the marketing to get students into the program. But, yeah, I hope we can, we can develop this program, and I think it'll, it'll add to what we currently offer.
I have a couple of questions. I understand from what Christine said that some of the, that the high school, that the college credit will transfer. I'm assuming if they transfer, that means you have to go to Hudson Valley and transfer, or will the SUNY take them?
SUNY. Any SUNY school will take them.
Some private colleges will take Hudson Valley tuition, too. I mean, it's no different than any other college and high school program or AP. Some colleges take them, some don't. It's really, it has nothing to do with whether you're a SUNY school or not, really.
Well, some of the top business programs are not going to take marketing from Hudson Valley.
But they wouldn't take it even if you took it from CNN or Syracuse.
It depends on the program.
Well, my concern was, in the document we got, it said for each course from HVCC, and it didn't say anything about transferability and whether or not you could use it elsewhere. And one of the problems with AP courses early on, although it has changed markedly now, is that early on, they were not accepted at a lot of colleges. They are now.
It's actually gotten worse.
It's gotten worse, yeah.
Well, but still, they are accepted at places, but I, so the goal is to make sure that our students know, if they're going to get into this program, where these credits will be accepted.
We don't, we don't really get into that, because in any of the college courses or AP, it's always dependent upon what college they ultimately choose to go to. So we don't ever guarantee that because you take this particular course, you're going to get credit, because some of it isn't only dependent upon the college, it's also dependent upon what they major in.
Right.
Is if it will be accepted or not.
Okay, but in order to pick a college, help the student pick a college where it would be accepted, I assume that we would have, our counselors would have some knowledge to put them together with an appropriate school.
But any SUNY school will, will take those credits, because they have an articulation agreement with Hudson Valley or Montgomery.
And the other question was, what kind of additional resources will this take, if any, or are we just taking classes and shifting them into this program?
Right now, no additional resources, but as enrollment grows, obviously, we'll need FTE increases in the business department.
Which would likely end up, if we're not increasing our student population, would, could likely be awash with other areas?
Could be.
Okay, thank you.
And just to back on your AP thing, I think it's great to diversify from the AP. It helps build some life skills that you normal, you might not get with an AP course and you would, with a business course.
Regarding the college credits, I think a lot of parents would be really interested to hear about that. Do we have a program for educating ninth-grade students about this, about this diploma and also about reaching out to parents to let them know about this possible pathway?
I mean, it hasn't been approved yet, but we would once it's approved.
Okay.
And we communicate with parents now in terms of how AP works versus college and high school.
Right. But I mean, a lot of parents, I'm sure.
So I would like to share, if I may, sorry to interrupt. As part of our self-study, we had a meeting later in the fall that we invited the middle school counselors to come meet with the high school counselors in my classroom, because it was the best place for them at the time, and we shared information about the potential so they could bring it back to the middle school and thinking about it and asking them to provide me with questions, so I could help the high school guidance counselors address that as well, as we were going through the process of developing the plans. So they're, they're very excited about it, and I'm hoping that they can help guide some of the eighth graders as they move forward.
Great.
Can I ask one more question? So you indicated at the end they have to take a technical assessment with written performance in a project. Have we tested that out to see if it's passable by all the students? So if we're diversifying the students that are in there, and we have some special ed or 504, we don't want to see them get through the sequence and then not be able to be successful on that assessment.
So the assessments that we reviewed were either from NOCD or Precision. I opted, as part of the application process, to add Precision assessments in with our applications. Number one, because they offer the written, the performance, and they support the locally-developed portfolio as far as the pieces go. Precision kind of puts that all together for us, and the reports generated are a little bit more in-depth and reader-friendly than NOCD, that I've noticed, in my opinion. In addition to the technical assessment of Precision, it is one of the providers that the state education department is supporting, not endorsing, but supporting as part of our selection. So what Precision also is not only offers all the pieces to the assessment that we need to provide, and I can gauge it depending on the student's ability and things that we need to test depending on their pathway. We also have the opportunity to use it more frequently, because it's much more cost-efficient. So we could use it as a pre and a post. We could use it early on to see how they do, and then test them again as they get, move forward through some of the pathway courses to see how they're progressing, and then give it as a capstone exam. So there's a lot of, in my opinion, many more options with Precision of the assessment that we chose.
Okay.
And I would invite the board, if you so are inclined, Precision's very open to coming in to present. I had them come in and we talked to the administration, so if you, if you would like them to come to a board meeting and show you a demonstration and maybe a sample of the testing, I know they would be willing to do that.
Thank you.
You have a question?
So is the, well, just that the board approves it, and then Mike, as the board president, has to sign it before it goes to state ed. So is the board?
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor of it.
Is there a motion?
Doing a formal.
It's like a, just, are we in agreement?
You have a formal.
Sure.
Can I have a motion to approve the CTE pathways to graduation in business program proposal?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you for putting that all together.
All in favor?
Your support.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Next up is recognition of visitors on an agenda item. If there are, is anyone in the audience who would like to speak on an agenda item? Now is the time to come up. Seeing no visitors, we'll move on to the next item, action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one through four.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll just say, I would say thank you to the Bethlehem Softball Booster Club for their donation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Section B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through five.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Item C, support personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through two.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Item D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one through two.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just clarification on the minutes that we have. Two is crossed out, three is the new two, and I just want to make sure that that's what we're voting on, to clarify the record.
Yes, the one that I have from, that I printed off the website says.
Those were already printed, so I did them till three slipped up there, the final version.
Yeah, so it's those two.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Actually, I just, on policy, 4321.14, Students with Disabilities Participating in School District Programs. Oh, that's not the right one. It's the Out-of-District Kids Participating in In-District Programs. I think maybe we did that last week, or last meeting.
Yeah, we did that already.
Okay. I just, I guess, regardless of when we passed it, I just wanted to ensure, I know that at the advisory committee discussions, there was conversations about out-of-district-placed students not being able to or allowed to or invited to in district events, and I know that we approved the policy and I didn't raise it at the time, but I just wanted to make sure that we had sorted out.
So in the policy, it's correct that they can participate in after-school activities. They can't participate in, for example, field trips that are related to the curriculum, but yes, that's correct.
So whatever miscommunication is existing, I find correct.
Is your, is your question like, that it hasn't, like, we need to communicate it better? Is that what you're saying? Yeah, I agree.
Sorry. Didn't mean to derail.
Nope, I hear what you're saying.
That's okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Item E, the 2019-2020 Capital Region BOCES Administrative Budget. It is recommended that the Board of Education vote to approve the following administrative budget of the Capital Region BOCES.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. F, the Capital Region BOCES Board Member Election. It is recommended that the Board of Education vote, and I think we should vote on each It is recommended that the Board of Education cast a vote to slate Mr. Kevin Kutcher of Sharon Springs Central School District as one of the candidates for the BOCES board position for a term of three years.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Am I correct that there's no choice in the matter? I mean, we have.
There's four seats.
Four seats, four people.
Correct.
It is, that is correct.
You don't have to.
Would you like to vote on them all together?
Yeah, you can abstain if you want.
What's that?
No, I think what he's saying is, can we just vote on them all together?
Yeah, can we just do it, and, I mean, because we have no choice, either we're going to put them up or down unless somebody wants to put one person up or one person down, but, I mean, the result is the same.
I'm fine with it. So how about we amend that to say it is recommended that the Board of Education cast a vote to slate Mr. Kevin Kutcher of Sharon Springs Central School District, Mrs. Heather Soroka of Waterfleet City School District, Mrs. Rose Sermon of Copleskill Richmond Central School District, and Mr. Matthew Tadashi of Burn Knox Westerlow Central School District as candidates for BOCES board positions for a term of three years.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. We can now recognize visitors on a non-agenda item. If there's anybody out there who would like to speak on a non-agenda item, and if you could come to the microphone and just state your name, please.
Jared King, 22 Paxton Road. I received a Bethlehem Strategic Plan 2019-2024 publication, which probably many of you are familiar with, and I read it, and I was, well, I'm almost never dumbfounded, so I won't say dumbfounded, but surprised, let's just put it that way. This sounds like a lot of mumbo jumbo, and I think that we really deserve to get more and dig deeper and really actually drive things forward. So in the five-year plan, that says under section one, I guess this is a discussion of curriculum, it says, "Close all achievement gaps." That is a recipe for just taking money and burning it. The reality is, is all kids are special and all kids are different. They have different abilities, and to sit there and try to force kids like a square peg into a round hole because of, we have some arbitrary achievement, gold isn't, I think, productive, and I think it's a waste of money. What I learned from my father, and I'm really blessed to have my father as my father, is that whenever he saw some sort of talent in me, he tried to develop it. So for me, for example, one thing is I loved to draw when I was a kid, and so he like, put me into like some class that was supposed to be architecture. It turned out it really wasn't, but neither here nor there, because I like to draw houses. One thing also is that when we went on some vacation, I had only played miniature golf once before, and I came in second in a golf competition. So the next thing you know is he was taking me off to golf courses. What he didn't know is that I can hit a wood for the rest of my life, it's all spliced all over the place, but I can putt. But the point is, is, you know, and same thing with Earl Woods with his son Tiger. At age four, the kid was showing some real talent. What we don't, shouldn't be doing is saying, "This is a certain curriculum, this is what you have to do," et cetera, and if one kid is doing better than another, it may be that he has more ability in that area. The new president of Yale University, his name's Peter Salovey, his professorial work is on what's called EQ, if you've heard that expression. He and another professor developed this whole idea that there's other types of intelligence, not just, you know, what is measured by IQ, but also emotional quotient. So there are things that are, that, so I think that's just a terrible idea, very stupid. Okay, number three, fully implement a K through 12 academic and behavior response-to-intervention program. I don't even understand what that says, I don't even know what it means. Number four, integrate innovative, rigorous, and engaging instructional technology throughout K-12 educational program. I think our school system, and probably other school systems in the state, have made a real mistake in focusing on technology as opposed to on learning. Technology is a tool, it's not the actual understanding. So I would actually prefer classes on computer programming, or where like the theory of computer programming, understanding that, than necessarily saying, "Learning how to use a cellphone." Now, I had a cellphone back when it was like 2G, and in New York, I was told that I had better get a cellphone, and with 4G, so obviously, I learned how to use that within about a week or two weeks. I don't think that's necessarily that we have to put that kind of investment in, in technology per se. I certainly benefit from our typing class when I was a student here, and it was actually the middle school, because I was using that all the time in college, but I would, that is expressionist, a cliche, and it's often used without actually thinking behind what it really means. Also, I just will make another slight off-comment, but in the job market, one of the biggest, hottest demand areas, and in fact, actually, our teacher was kind of pushing in that area, is social skills, the things that the young people today lack. So STEM is actually, since I can program to anything, is actually kind of in low demand, and the pricing isn't there. I can make more money as a salesman than I can as a computer programmer, so that's just something, with all this emphasis, the state is like 10 years behind the eight ball. Okay, so now skipping down to two, the Y, character education. All right, so number four, develop, promote, and expand extracurricular opportunities for students. I'm not exactly sure what that really is. I'm not exactly sure what that really means. Again, you know, a lot of learning, there's only certain amount of hours in a day, and kids are going to learn. And, you know, it's sort of like my father with the, my mother wanted to, you know, the birds and the bees, I learned that on the street, he can too. So, but it's the same idea, is that, you know, whatever we're doing, I'm not sure that necessarily has to be top-down, it should also be bottom-up. And I'm not averse to the school system trying to promote certain things, but we should also kind of be listening to the ground, and I'm not necessarily sure that we're going to necessarily do that effectively from the school down. Let's let the students kind of decide what they want to do and then try to channel that. All right, so now we're on to goal three, community. Five-year plan, collaborate, this is number one, with community partners to support and expand opportunities for students, here, here. So my favorite person, you know, when I was a kid, like, at least with the school boards, was Dr. Bob Zick. He may be long gone in terms of people's memories, but he was a, a strong advocate for BOCES at a time when people in Bethlehem were all about, my kid's, you know, going to be a doctor, my kid's going to be a lawyer. Let's not forget that we have students who are going through a BOCES program. If it's business education, it's business education. So I think that's extremely important. It may even be special ed, although I think that gets a lot more attention. But even so, we should be educating all kids and try to find what they're good at. And it can be, you know, there are kids who are idiot savants, right? They, they may not be mentally retarded, let's say, but they may be amazing musicians. We should try to, you know, glorify that and improve on that and help support that is what I would like to see our school system do. But, and a great way to do that is with community partners, of course, so I'm, but I know that the Education Department can be a real problem in this, it's all top-down, and often it's about protecting union positions, but that's really not what it should be about, it should be about educating our kids. And so I think that's a great idea. All right, so number four, if I can only read my handwriting, prove, create opportunities for family mentoring programs to guide families through school processes to assist with hardships. I can't read my writing, what I was commenting about that, but that also seems like to be a, a kind of a lofty goal, but without any kind of necessarily idea where the expense is going to be, we're trying to address all the problems. I know that when I've, this, I guess, was when I was in Connecticut and I was campaigning for Ross Pro, one thing about teachers, when you meet them, they love to talk. So they'll tell you things about, like, you know, teaching kids. And, you know, it's the great late George Lenhart used to tell me, the big problem with schools today is that, obviously, back in his day, it was like 40 students in a class, you know, "Good morning, Mr. Lenhart." In my day, it was like probably 28 kids in a class, and now we're down to 21 or 22 because we have real behavioral problems. So obviously, what the teachers will want me to know is that they can't solve the issues that are going on in the house. So, and, you know, obviously, we have breakdowns in our families and a lot of other problems. Goal four, with respect to wellness. Number two, provide programs to strengthen the emotional and physical wellness of students and staff. Again, an open-ended, undefined, poorly defined, what does that really mean? Obviously, I don't want kids in an emotional or physical, you know, poor place, but I don't know what that means, it should be more defined. Implement, this is number three, implement the K through 12 special emotional learning curriculum. Again, I don't know what exactly that means, and I'm not sure schools are the best place where that's going to be taught, and, but I certainly recognize the breakdown of our society and a lot of these things that should have been picked up, perhaps not in school or were picked up, are really struggling now. And so I don't have answers, there are no easy answers to that, but those were just my comments. But I guess, there are two things that I just want to be specific about. Number one, you're the educators, so it's important that you define what these things mean and be specific. We have to have a plan in place, not just lofty platitudes that mean nothing. Second, and I read here about not to be specific, so I will not be specific, but a teacher in this school has a student who is, the father is a friend of mine, and when they, she was doing a, I guess the student was not doing well, so they were meeting with the parents, and what I was concerned about is, again, another platitude type of expression, well, it's, it's up to her. No, she's 13 years old, it's not up to her, she's a minor. We're the majors, so it's, as adults, get the parents involved, but we rely on the teacher. I'm one of the few people you'll hear that actually supports an education degree. I'm not making jokes about people having an education degree. The idea is not just, it's a subject matter knowledge, it's knowing how to teach kids, knowing how to deal with the problems of kids, of growing up, of being an adolescent. So I expect a teacher to have, actually have ideas and not just sit there and throw it off to the student, because often, as, as this individual is saying, you know, he made mistakes in his life that have caused him to turn professionally, and he doesn't want those problems to happen for his kids. And how do you get to a kid who doesn't, whose life experience is just so short that they don't know what's going to happen? I remember with, and I'll wrap up, but with Monica Lewinsky, right? She's 21, 22, 23. She thinks of what's going on as, oh, how dare you say, I'm a woman, I'm an adult. And yet, sure enough, now, she realizes that was like the biggest mistake in her life. She was branded this way, she couldn't even get jobs because people would like laugh at her because, you know, you know, that kind of thing. We expect our parents to have the wisdom, you know, we've all grown, gone through the teenage years, et cetera, to try to share that wisdom with their kids, whether you pick it up or not, I don't know. But that's what I'm saying, that's what the school is, and it's your professional experience which is relevant, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the board? Future meetings on Monday, April 29th at 6:00 p.m. There is a policy committee meeting. Wednesday, May 1st is Meet the Candidates Night. Is that?
We'll send.
Jill.
Well, the, all petitions are due April 22nd, so we'll send a notice out if that's not going to happen.
Okay. Wednesday, May 8th is the next regular board meeting. There is an anticipated executive session starting at 6:00 p.m. with the public meeting starting at 7:00. Tuesday, May 21st is our annual school district budget vote and Board of Education election here at the high school in the upper gym. And polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And Wednesday, May 22nd is the next board meeting after that.
Just a question, with the auditorium renovation starting, is there any issue with using the upper gym and access to that main door? It's still fine?
No, the musicians who usually are in there won't be in there, they're going to be playing.
The foyer?
Yeah.
By the cafeteria.
Yeah.
Right there. Seeing no reason to adjourn to executive session again, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.